Warning, we are not trained or licensed professionals. Do not take any advice that we give as official doctoral prescribed medical treatment. We only use the name as a means to appreciate cinema as a therapeutic device. Not be confused with drugs, antidepressants, or any other forms of enhancements that you might find in legal states. Please enjoy responsibly.
Additional disclaimer, if the film says [BLEEP], we can say it too. So check the film rating and that will be our episode rating.
Hello.
Hello, it's me, Madison.
And me, hi, I'm here too.
Welcome to our recording space.
Today, we're gonna be watching Lost Highway.
Again.
Uh, we're doing a commentary because this movie puzzled us so much that we had to watch it. We had to watch it with you, so if you have the movie, um, you know, go ahead and watch it.
Yes, please watch along. So here we go. Our first commentary.
So we're watching this on Amazon video, so, um, uh, 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 gave it a cold, uh, gave it a virus, uh, 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 life, uh, finds a way. Um, we're gonna be watching it on Amazon video, so, um, we're gonna be starting it at forty-four seconds because there's the piracy warnings and the uni- which, you know, and the universal, the first universal logo, the modern one. So we're gonna be starting Amazon video at forty-four seconds, but on the counter that we might have down below, it's going to be zero seconds because people could be watching their DVDs or their VHS copies if you want to. Laser disc if it's on laser disc, Blu-ray, so, you know, 4K, 8K, ultra, ultra wine and dine movie. Um, mo- movie in theater experience with popcorn and booze and.
Yes, so just start it at the second or like the universal logo for you.
Started at the nineteen ninety-seven universal logo, or whatever year it debuted.
Ninety-seven, yeah.
Alright, so you count us down and then you play it.
Alright, here we go. Three, two, one, play.
Yeah, we just, I think we just wanted to watch Lost Highway again because it's such a, um, it's such a perplexing movie.
Yeah, we couldn't stop talking about it after we watched it and then we both rewatched parts of it and.
Mm-hmm, and we're like, we wanna watch it again together, so why not just record a commentary for it?
Yeah.
So hopefully it's not too dry. We don't, we don't have long spells of just not saying anything, but.
I think it'll be the opposite. I think we're gonna be talking so much that we freak, like, we get past a certain point of the movie and then we're like, oh no, now it's this part that's coming up. And we're just gonna get lost. These titles are so weird.
Yeah, it really is.
It's like a, seems like a, an action movie.
It really does, yeah. I like the shot of the highway, though.
Yeah.
Giovanni Ribisi.
I'll see if I can spot him this time.
Me too. Angelo. Yeah, David Bowie. Um, I like David Bowie a lot. Um, what do you think of this song? Or if there, we can talk about the songs as they come up, but what do you think of this song?
I don't really like it.
Yeah, I'm really mixed on it cuz I really liked the beginning, but I never listened to the whole thing.
Yeah.
Like when I'm on Spotify, I'll listen to like the first like minute and then I'm like, okay, I'm over this.
Okay, that's enough.
But that doesn't change, I still love David Bowie. Like, he's, he's, he's great.
He's great.
I missed the co-write, I missed the writing credit. I wasn't sure who wrote this with David Lynch.
Some guy.
Find that out. Some guy. Some guy. Maybe it was Ken Adams.
Maybe.
But is this movie, yes, movies are, so we can, we can swear all we want.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, like you said, you, this scene is after Renee is already dead.
Yeah.
This is like when he pulls up at, in the last scene, when he pulls up to this, to the, his house and puts the uh, doorknob, he rings the doorbell and says Dick LaRant is dead.
Right, and especially cuz that first shot, it was flashed in red. I know you couldn't see it, but the light was red. And that was, he, he was facing the other way like that. And so I think that means it's like forward in time.
And then you think all the ni- I, I wanna, I wanna see your theory in action. So you think, you think all the night scenes are like, um, one, uh, like over one night in this first, in this first act? Right?
Yeah, I can't really even remember what I said, but, um, it'll probably come back to me, though. Something like that, yeah.
I love the way David Lynch's creates atmosphere. He does it so well. It's so unique.
Absolutely. What's with those windows? They're absolutely horrible.
Yeah, they are.
Can you imagine living in a house and those are your windows?
That would suck. Well, in this room, it's fine, cuz it's like a big window, but, yeah, why would you have those windows?
Like your main room. Oh yeah, so I was thinking when he's looking down here, he's looking for the cops who were chasing him.
But they've already chased him cuz, cuz he rang the doorbell, said Dick LaRant is dead and then, you know, drove away.
Right.
Or cuz if he do, if he's going to the, if he's in the electric chair at the end, that scene of him driving away is in his mind and that's right before the cops come to pick him up and put him in the jail cell.
Yeah, that's true. But then it makes als- it also makes sense in this linear way where he's just looking for whoever rang the doorbell in this moment.
Uh-huh, there's a saxophone.
Tricky.
And there's Patricia Arquette, the first Patricia Arquette.
Hello, nice to meet you.
We'll meet you again later. This movie's audio fluctuates a lot.
I know, especially in this first scene. I'm not even gonna waste my time turning it up.
That's why we have the subtitles on. Hopefully we don't sound too pretentious or too highbrow while doing this, but like, this is the scene when Fred's like, um, there's no way you're staying home to, like, they're both joking about it, but there's that underlying theme of, you know, are you sleeping with somebody else? Are you seeing somebody else?
Yeah, and I guess that's why he came off as really creepy and like.
Yep, like with lines like that. But I'm sorry, you were saying he came off really creepy?
Yeah, that was a good, like, I can still make you laugh, like, you still love me, I'm your husband. We're married, remember, we're married. Um, but I also, I thought he was like an abusive boyfriend or something, husband at first.
Maybe he was and we don't know it. It's so frantic. It's just like in, it's just like the pink room in Fire Walk With Me, where it's just like that strobing effect that probably makes some people turn the movie off because it's so intense. But I, I really dig it, even though it, even though it's very headache inducing. You know, I just, I just made this connection, this symbolic connection, but Fred playing the sax is probably like, like, is he's, it's, it's like he's, you know, expressing all his inner emotions while playing it.
Hmm, yeah, definitely.
I think that's true with music and, I think that's true with music and movies a lot. Um, just when people play like a song, it's just expressing their emotions.
Yeah.
And this room backstage is very red. Um, it's very, it's, it's lit in this eerie red glow.
Which we'll see numerous amount of times.
Yeah, cuz her not answering is, you know,
Yeah.
It, it, it all ties into his insecurity, which is really what fuels the, the movie.
Yes. That's why he's red.
Yeah. So I wanna think of your, cuz I remember your theory was something like, all these scenes are in the same night.
Yeah.
Like he comes home and she's there and then he goes, then they go to Andy's and then they drive home and then he kills her and then.
Yeah, so.
Also, we should put this in the beginning, but this is, this isn't the first time commentary. We're gonna like talk about the whole movie as if you've already seen it.
Yes.
This, this is like, this is like the second part of our episode.
So go listen to our podcast episode first. First, watch the movie, then what, listen to our podcast episode, then come watch the commentary.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so he's going back into the red room. Look where he's going. He's going into the deep, dark red room and he's gonna go murder her.
Cuz there's red curtains, so it's, it's the red room. And like, I think, I don't know if you said this or if I saw an analysis on YouTube, but like, when he goes into that dark hallway, that's like the dark part of his psyche that he can't remember. Cuz he likes to remember things his own way, you know?
Mm-hmm. Which would make sense if he like murdered her right after that part.
Yep.
You know, cuz yeah, like you said, this fades out after pretty much every scene and you don't know when it's actually happening. So like, I think this stuff could have happened before all the taped stuff.
This has nothing to do with Lost Highway, but one thing we talked about is, um, uh, we, we have a couple, we have, like, we, we've always had a hit list of movies we've wanted to cover on the podcast and we wanted to space those out. So like, you know, for Garden State, we'll do a special episode on that and for the Lucy trilogy, obviously. But we're thinking also like, we should, if we could do a commentary on all those too, that'd be so fun. But like, if we were to do something like Harry Potter, we would get like everybody to come to the episode, every, like, all the guests we've had that have seen Harry Potter and we would do like a full, like, two and a half hour commentary on the first movie or something. Which would be insane, but it would be so fun.
Potter Party.
Yeah, that's what we would call it, is Harry Potter Party. And, and if, if it got enough hits, we'd keep going. We'd do all eight movies.
Oh my god.
Which would be insane, which I haven't discussed that part with Maddie yet, so. That's her nat- that's her natural reaction to, to my suggestions is.
Oh god, oh god.
Oh god. And then, and then once she does it, she's like, thanks for making me do that. And I'm like, you're welcome. Which makes it, this makes our friendship sound worse than it actually is. Like, we actually have probably a really strong friendship.
Yes.
We have a good balance.
We do. Yeah, so this is also a part where I thought he was creepy and he's like, well, what's that? Hey, and then she acts kinda scared, like.
Because it's, she thinks it's the tape from Mr. Eddie. It's the adult tape. Because if Renee is, is Alice, then that's what she's nervous about. It's like, if it's the adult tape she made with Mr. Eddie and then it got sent to her anonymously. That's, that's what I think anyways. And that's why she's like, oh, it's just the realtor or the real estate agent or whatever she says.
Okay.
That's my interpretation. I would argue this movie is even more complex than Mahal and Drive because there's so many more, not saying Mahal and Drive isn't complex cuz it is, it's incredible, but this movie just has so many layers to it, you know?
Yeah, so many.
There's so many different ways to interpret it and I feel like it just, even though it's the precursor to Mahal and Drive, I feel like this movie just, it, I think it perplexes both of us more, I would say. Would you think that's true?
Mm-hmm. I think it's because
Also, no, oh, go ahead.
The, they have one actress carrying over both scene or both stories, but they changed the dude actor. Okay, so here we go, back in the red room, what's gonna happen?
And the mystery man is recording the tapes, which we know, so. Okay, this is his dream, right? So he's remembering a night he played and Renee's with Andy. Yeah, cuz that's Andy and then she leaves with him. And, and then he sees it and that's why he's thinking she's having an affair. And, and if she does go and film, you know, the tapes with him and with Mr. Eddie, then, which they do show later, then that means that that's what she thought that they were getting when the tape came.
Yes. Moment of silence for the nude. So I'm trying to figure out when this scene takes place.
I think it takes place, so I think we mostly have it linearly so far because Fred plays his first, so he's playing the saxophone. I think the first time he plays it and she sees Renee leave, that happens before, like, that, that, that's like the first scene linearly. Cuz the first scene of the movie we've established is at the end, right? So the first scene is the one Fred just remembered of Renee leaving the club with somebody else. And then, then, then she goes off and films the tape and then he is going to, um, then he goes and plays a second solo and then she's like, I'm, I won't be able to go, I'm gonna stay home and read. And then this could be when he gets home or it could be the second day, like, we don't really, we don't really know.
I'm convinced, I think, that he murders her after that night, that first night. Not the first night, first night, cuz I think this night came before that first night.
So this night, so the movie is like backwards, it's like memento, basically.
Yeah.
Which, that's a really valid theory, too. So I think that glow also happens, like that glow on, when it goes from her face to white also happens at the end with uh, the last scene between Pete and Alice also.
Oh, okay. Interesting. I wonder what that is.
We'll look for that. Here, I can write it down.
Yeah, good idea. So is he freaking out because he like feels her wedding ring on?
Oh, I never even no- noticed that. Maybe it's just the fact that, that he wasn't able to do what he wanted, you know?
Yeah.
But yeah, it, it could be that. I don't know. See, like in any normal movie, like, normal, in any other movie, you would just look at it and just be like, oh, it's because of one reason or this reason. But David Lynch's movies are so abstract that when you have an actor do a new, just do a small nuanced gesture, you're just like, what does it mean?
What does it mean?
It could mean a thousand things.
Yeah.
What does it mean? I think this is also Fred, you know, trying to reconnect with her because he's, that, that's really what he's been doing is trying to reconnect with her cuz he can't physically, so he's like, now I'll try emotionally. Yeah, okay, so this is the dream. So is, this is the dream of the night he kills her, which happens in the future.
Yes.
So he must have had this dream and then, so the movie's, the first, the first third is backwards. Cuz he must have had this dream and then he was at the club with her. Cuz then that, that same night was when he was trying to, you know, reconnect with her, which is right now. So I think this dream actually happened before that.
Mm-hmm, that would make sense. Yeah, so we had the fire, that shot of the fire and now the smoke, which is.
And then it happens with the, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, reminiscent of the cabin later on.
Yes, which we see multiple times.
Yes, and so I think that, so he's entering the red room. And that's when he's killing her.
Yep, but, but he has, he has the dream about it first and then he kills her for real.
Yeah.
Supposedly, cuz we don't know, cuz then, I mean, probably, but you know. Oh god, here we go. Oh no. So this, this is also backwards cuz that's after he has the dream.
Right.
So this whole first act is really backwards. So it's, it's kinda like, it's very much like memento in that way. This is definitely Lynch's most underrated movie because not many people talk about it when they talk about their favorite Lynch movies. It's always Mahal and Drive or Blue Velvet or, you know, but this movie just is so, cuz those movies are great too, but this movie just, it just has something unique about it that I've never seen in any other movie, ever. Oh, I've got it. It is like memento. So the daytime scenes of them finding the tapes, that's in forward motion. The nighttime scenes are backward.
Okay, okay.
So does that make sense?
Yeah, I could see that.
I almost wanna like get my, get a digital copy of this movie and like re-edit it so I can explain, like, like, point and click and be like, this is how the theory happens. Although I could just like take notes of every scene and like, write down the order, the movie presents it and then like side by side with a, this is the chronological order, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's all very con- their dialogue is all very constrained, you know? Like, 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 like he's like, you're up early and she's like, and he's like, who owns that dog? Like, there's no, their, their physical and emotional intimacy is long gone, which is where Fred's insecurity probably stemmed from initially and then amplified when he saw her with Andy.
Yeah.
I think we're actually close to cracking this movie. I mean, let me, let me, let me rephrase that. I think we're close to settling on a theory. At least for the beginning.
But, yeah, we're only twenty minutes in.
We still have the rest of the movie.
And that's where it's gonna get messed up.
Yep, but that's when we meet Pete and Alice and the other Pete.
Yeah, and Mr. Eddie.
If this movie had Colin McLaughlin in it, I think, I think that's the only way it could be better.
Yeah, from, yeah.
Like, I would, I gotta be like, oh, it's easy five stars if Colin McLaughlin was in it. Although, maybe I might bump it up to five stars, I don't know. I'm, I'm debating, I'm debating at least a four and a half, like, cuz I have it at four right now on Letterboxd.
I think I put it at five.
See, see, this is the kinda stuff, normal, this is the kinda stuff professional people talk about when they do commentaries. So yeah, so my que- so I guess, yeah, so the daytime scenes happen forward, the nighttime scenes happen backward. But then when, when are the tapes filmed?
Yeah, I don't know.
Is the mystery man Fred? Is he like a Black Lodge spirit? Is he possessing Fred? You know, are Fred and Pete the same? See, see, we have, like I said, we're not even,
Right.
I take back my earlier statement, we're not even close.
There's just always an outlier element that happens and you're like, well, that fits in nowhere, so.
Yes.
We can throw that out.
So it's like often the, yeah, I'll have to throw that out. There's a lot of shots of her mouth, too. Cuz when we see Alice, we see her mouth and then her eyes and it's all just like obscure and shadowed, like a noir style of, um. See, like seven zero three five Hollis, like, do those numbers mean something?
Probably.
You, you never know with David Lynch. Like, in Fire Walk With Me, you see the six on the pole and then that like ties into, you know, that's like a Black Lodge thing cuz you always hear the little man when you see that. If the two detectives were Chris Isaac and Keith or Sutherland, then that would, then this would be like, I mean, I'm already convinced it takes place in Twin Peaks, but like, then that'd be con- confirmation, that'd be too much confirmation for, um, for David Lynch.
Yeah, definitely. That would make too much sense.
Yes, it's the room with the bed in it.
Yeah, what's the point of this part? Both of you is?
Because it sets up the movie, because Fred's like, I remember things my own way. Yeah, cuz he acts really suspicious in this scene. Yeah, she has absolutely beautiful hair.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think it's a wig, but.
Okay, yeah, it's a beautiful wig. Her, her hair in the second half is also just, just gorgeous, though. So I don't think these two detectives, cuz when, when it's Pete, it's two different detectives and then in the last scene, the four detectives are all in the same scene at Andy's house.
Oh.
Does that make sense?
They are, okay.
He also said, I'll just remember things my own way, which is like the, 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 the key to the movie's puzzle.
Yes.
If you wanna, if you, if you will. How I remember them, not necessarily how they happened. That's the key to the movie's puzzle. Cuz they've both been out. Cuz she's been leaving with Andy and Mr. Eddie and Fred has been, uh, playing late at night.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why it says it kept going off, cuz I assume both of them arrived home at late times, like left or came home at irregular times, you know?
Maybe.
So I think that, maybe that's why the alarm went off. We're literally gonna spend two hours and fifteen minutes over analyzing this, so just, just, just bear with us.
Or it could mean false alarms as in like something to do with something else, cuz it's weird that he adds that false alarms, like, what else is a false alarm in this movie?
False alarms of her not being faithful, I don't know.
Yeah.
But they're poss- probable, they're possible true alarms.
Mm-hmm. Which is, well, no. I was gonna say, which would make sense if it went off when the mystery man came in and filmed, but they didn't cuz they shut it off.
Unless that's what they mean by false alarms and like it kept going off.
Oh, oh yeah, maybe, yeah.
Because we never, I was gonna say, I wish we could see Fred and Renee before their marriage, like when they first met and how they fell in love, but we kind of get that with Pete and Alice, except it's like Fred's own version of that. So, cuz he remembers things his own way.
Right.
So I, I think there, I think it would be very similar to that, but it'd be interesting to see that. David Lynch, ma- make Lost Highway Part Two and make us even more confused. Actually, you know, I'm wishing for things, just make more Twin Peaks and then have Bill Pullman and Patricia Arquette be, or just even Bill Pullman be in Twin Peaks Season Four, and then that means that this takes place in the world of whatever. Of the, the other world that Carrie is in, but I'm not gonna say anymore cuz I don't wanna spoil.
Ah, okay. Uh, there's also so many shots of like from above or below, like this.
Yeah, what do you think that means?
Well.
As above, so below?
Like the mystery man's watching.
Right. So I think they said, we'll be watching. Did the cops say that, we'll be watching? So I think they said, we'll be watching. Did the cops say that, we'll be watching?
Um, I think so.
I don't remember. So wait, do we see her later? Is, is she like at the party at the end with everybody, with Mr. Eddie and Renee and Andy? I'm gonna say, I'm gonna put that down, woman Andy sees by the pool. I like the song a lot.
Yeah.
Two double scotches neat. Yeah, so Fred's, so this night scene, then this would take place. That, that's, that's where I get confused, cause like, when does this take place?
Yeah.
Like this scene, like, does it take place after Fred sees Renee leave? Or is this before, and then when he sees her with Andy at the club, that's when he starts to connect it in his head?
Yeah, because he doesn't really seem suspicious after this party, cause he, they drive home and they're like, he, she tells him about Andy. And he doesn't really seem like.
He's a little suspicious.
Yeah, he is. But I think he would be like way more like, so Andy huh? Or something like that.
Yeah, Andy huh? What's, what's up with this Andy, this, this Andy person?
Than this guy. I like how the music fades out.
I love that so much.
So creepy.
He's so creepy. Yeah, so that, that theory still applies then, that all the night scenes are in reverse. Imagine if like somehow our theory becomes like the most accepted theory, like, what, like, like over twenty years after this movie came out?
We're so smart, we figured it out.
We figured it out. This theory we have, it's just a possible one. We're not saying it's like the, there, in no way in hell is it like the definitive Lost Highway interpretation. It would just be kind of funny if that ended up and happened.
Yes, it's just, we have to make sense of it somehow.
Uh huh. And our way to do that is to record a commentary.
Yes.
Where we just talk about moments we love and just trying to piece this, this, this art, piece of art together.
Ugh, chills.
It's such a perfect moment, like. This movie's so underappreciated. I just wanna show this movie to like everybody, except, not everybody would wanna watch it.
Yeah, uh, cause then after it's over, most people will just be like, well, okay. And then like, would you wanna spend the time talking about it for like two more hours after it went? When they're like so far behind, you know?
Yeah, we'd, we'd, we'd have to like, I actually would think I'll write this theory down, I'll, I'll, we'll go through the commentary. And I'll write down like that little tie, like that little side by side idea I had. And then we'll be like, we'll both, um, like, I'll be like, this is the theory. And when I watch it to people, I'll pause it at intervals and be like, okay, so this is what I think happens chronologically. Like, like when, like before Pete and Alice show up, like I would pause it before the movie changes and be like, so this is, so what'd you think of that? And I'll say this is like, I'll like, kind of walk it through.
Yeah, like this isn't just gonna be a watching movie experience, it's gonna be an interactive experience.
It's really like, yeah, cause we watched, when we watched the return together, even after part two, we paused and had like a four hour discussion about what we had seen.
Yeah.
And then we weren't even, we weren't even in the meat and potatoes yet. We were, and then like part after part eighteen, the same thing happened. Where we literally spent like, we were on the phone for like six hours just talking about what the hell happened. So Fred has killed Dick Laurent now.
Has he though?
Because he says, he says he's dead.
Oh, right.
Oh, and then that look between Andy and Renee, so Renee is, yeah. So this, so this must be, so Fred must have heard it, so it must be in a time loop.
Aw, man. Shit.
Ah, this throws this off, off a whack. But yeah, when I showed a friend of mine Fire Walk With Me, that's what I did was I was. I, I know I should have showed him the show first, but I wanted to show him the movie, cause it had a deep impact on me. So like, I was pausing it and explaining like how it fits into the series and like, like trying to contextualize it for him. And, and he said he liked it, so.
Okay, good.
So this is when Fred's really, so Dick Laurent is dead the first time Fred hears it. That scene is after he's killed Renee, but then it's also before this scene.
Maybe it was in his, maybe it was part of his dream or something and he, cause he looks like he couldn't really remember why he do that.
Right. So like he's asking her and then she's like trying to assuage his, was that the word? Um, like, like assage his fears a little bit.
Assuage?
And then, but then it, yeah, assuage, thank you. His fears a little bit, but neither of them really convinced the other one. They're both just still kind of like, Renee's like, does he know? And Fred's like, I don't really trust what she's telling me, you know?
Yeah.
Or we could be thinking so much that we're just like. I love that line. Um, but she's a, but, but it, it could just be Fred, like none of that could be true and it could be Fred overthinking all of it.
What the hell was that?
Why do we see, why do we see Renee in the picture at the end? And I don't know who that is. Is that like the mystery man at his house? Cause he said he's at his house.
Yeah, probably.
I don't know about you, I'm having so much fun. I'm glad we decided to do this.
Me too. It just, it makes this experience easier to watch the movie and talk about it and ex- like express all of our thoughts that we are having. All at the same time.
This movie just, this is like my third time watching this in full, like third and a half time. This movie just gets better every time I watch it.
Good. I'm excited to get to my third and a half time.
Yeah. So the phone's on, but wait, is the phone like off the hook? Did you see that shot?
Um, no, I think it was just on the floor.
Okay.
Okay, here we go. Red room, red room.
So their house must be a portal to the Black Lodge. If, if we're connecting it to Twin Peaks.
Yeah, must be, yeah. What does he see?
And what's, what's in the dark that we don't see? Cause this, this is like the part that he doesn't want to remember.
Right.
Okay, so, so, so she's not sober right now, cause she's like, why'd you make me stay out there? She's like laughing it off. You know, if you two could just get over each, get over yourselves and just talk about Renee, just talk about what you've been doing and Fred just admit your insecurities, then you, then they'd be fine. But then there wouldn't be a movie.
It's all about communication, everyone.
Yeah, this, this movie's about the lack of communication. Be open with somebody, if you need to end a relationship, end it and, um, yeah, communicate.
Mm hmm. Communicate. It's simple.
Even if your fears are totally irrational, just start off by saying, honey, I know this is irrational, but you know, I, I don't think you're, you know. Um, also, she takes her makeup off, but it doesn't come off. Do you notice that?
Hmm.
Cause I didn't notice that and then it got pointed out, um, cause I watched the YouTube analysis and then it, um, and the, uh, the. Uh, person on the channel pointed it out.
Hmm.
Um, cause like, she still has all her makeup on.
Hmm.
I'm wearing my, my socks, they say, uh, uh, one more episode, question mark, and then they say, okay, one more episode.
Aww, that's cute.
Oh no, I'm sorry, it's two sentences, not a question mark. One more episode. Okay, one more.
One more episode.
Yeah, okay, so Fred goes into the dark again and this is when he kills her, right? Cause the next morning he gets up and he sees the tape of killing her and then we cut to him in the police station. But wait, that means that this night is the first night, if our theory applies. So if this night's the first night, then. Maybe this is his dream. See, like her makeup's still on.
Hmm.
Wait, you don't agree with that?
My brain hurts.
We're not, we're not even like forty-five minutes in yet, like. My brain hurts too.
Okay, so he's just looking at himself. So then his, his evil version came out and killed her then?
So, so is that like his doppelganger from the lodge?
Yeah, yeah, something like that, probably.
Also, if, if this, if this isn't connected to Twin Peaks, then we're like.
Oh, we're so screwed.
We're so screwed.
It has to be, look at those curtains.
Uh huh, and then the mystery man is a Black Lodge, uh, being.
Absolutely.
There's, there's no doubt in my, there's a little doubt in my mind, but not a lot.
Oh yeah, so this is in his dream, when she's calling her, when she's calling his name.
So what if, what if this is his dream and then when he, when we see his dream earlier, that's the real life? That's when he kills her. So like when Fred says, I had a dream and we cut to the dream, we're not cutting to the dream, we're cutting to the night he kills her, and then this is his dream.
Yeah, mm hmm.
Maybe that, maybe that's why her makeup doesn't come off.
Yeah.
I can't see much, so you'll have to.
Okay, so we're downstairs in the living room. It's dark.
It's very dark.
Now Fred's coming out.
So this must be his evil side.
Evil. Look at his little smirk and his dark eyes, there's no light in his eyes.
Oh, oh, it's, it's Mr. Fred, Mr. F.
Mr. F.
Mr. F, that's, that's, that's our new name for him.
Mr. M.
Mr. M, oh, Mr. Madison, yeah, Mr. M. Not to be confused with mystery man, Mr. M. Okay, so that's Fred's dream and then this is the morning after he kills her, I think. No. Yes, is it?
This, I think this comes way before.
So then all the daytime scenes happen and then all the nighttime scenes happen backwards. But then they must happen in and out, they must be spliced in there somehow.
Although he doesn't call Renee in to watch this part, so.
Right, so she must be dead or not there or dead. But we'll get that, we'll get that, all that black he's wearing now. Like, that's so, that's so sinister.
Yeah, it is.
Me wearing black, I'm wearing a black sweatshirt and black sweat.
I'm, me too, well, I'm wearing dark gray.
I'm wearing dark gray underneath, so like that, that, that's the light inside me, but on the outside it's all dark. It's all evil and sinister, but yeah, like this must be after, cause wait, look at his eyes. We can tell by his, the light in his eyes, if there is any. He doesn't, he doesn't call Renee until he sees her dead in the video, so. So either she's not there or he, he's, he's not, he isn't connected in his mind until. With Twin Peaks, uh, when the killer does the kill. And then like, like they wake up as themselves and then Bob is like, Bob takes over and then they'll blackout and then they'll wake up as themselves. That could be happening to Fred.
Yeah.
I think we're, I think we're on the verge of, of, of a solid theory. Yes, I think, I think this is.
Okay, so there was that flash.
Yep. And then the flash is also when he turns into Pete and then when we see Alice at the end, so.
Okay.
I love the way he says both those lines too, like, like it's denial and then it's like.
Confusion.
Yeah, it's confusion and despair. So this scene is at, is the linear end, cause we've seen everything before this is real life. Like, you know, it's chronologically confused, but then this is, that's a video, chronologically confused about Lost Highway.
Oh, yeah.
Just the single movie, cause there's a, there's a, there's a series on YouTube. It's chronologically confused about movie sequel titles, movie and video game sequel titles. And then about the Legend of Zelda timeline, and then there's a third one about the Kingdom Hearts timeline. So ours is just chronologically confused about Lost Highway, just this one movie.
It seems like three movies, so.
It is. So would this be the second movie then? Or is this still part of the first?
This is the first one.
Okay. And then the second movie is the stuff with Pete and Alice, and then the third movie is the very end that brings it all together.
Correct.
I think we, um, I, I think, I think we'd understand this movie much more if we were under the influence of something. Like, that, 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 that's the last step of watching this movie together is.
Yes, next time.
Is that. Next time, yeah. Just come out and visit. Yeah, so even the jail time, is that like linear or not? Cause we see Fred in the yard and then he has a headache and then we see him at night.
Pete or, oh, Fred.
Uh, Fred.
Right, oh, yeah. Um. I think it's pretty linear in here.
Okay. So we'll stick with that, cause it makes my brain hurt less.
Yes, that above shot, the mystery man's like, ha, ha, ha.
You killed your wife, I win. So I guess this is a movie where evil does triumph, because Fred's lost in time or dies or transforms into someone else or whatever. Renee's dead, she was probably having an affair and he probably killed her and, um, mystery man wins. You know why? It's cause Cooper's not in this movie. If Cooper was in this movie. You know why he's not? Because this is, this takes place between seasons two and three, cause it takes place in nineteen ninety-seven.
Uh huh.
So Cooper would not be, Cooper would not be in the world right now. He would be where he is. So there we go.
There you go.
There you go.
And he is the ultimate good.
Right, and because he's gone, this is the descent into madness and Mahal and Drive does this too. It's the descent into madness until the return, which is, you know, that's why it's called the return.
You're so right.
So there we go. All, all of Lynch's movies are, are in the same narrative, or at least most of them. Do- Dune, you might, Dune you might have to, Do- Dune is what Cooper was doing in between seasons two and three, he was Paul Atreides. And then, yeah, Elephant Man can be in the real world. Elephant Man is in the world of part eighteen, cause it's like reality. And then Eraserhead is somewhere in the, in the, it's a movie set entirely in the lodge.
Yeah, yeah.
So there we go. And then England Empire, I don't care. And then, and then Straight, Straight Story is also, um, it's awesome, so we'll say it takes place when Cooper's still in like season one era of Twin Peaks.
Okay, okay.
Because Straight Story is the most like wholesome movie ever. And the Wild at Heart is also probably set in Twin Peaks, but I don't care about that one either, so. Sorry to fans of Wild at Heart, like I wish I loved it. Yeah, okay. Back to Lost Highway though. So first of all, I disconnect, that's the David Lynch Cinematic Universe, um, first of all. It's the best cinematic universe ever.
Now gonna be a regular thing with us now.
It is. I mean, it, it was already, but now it is.
Okay, yeah, cause you're right in the, right after he gets the headache, it fades to black, so it's like it could be put anywhere.
But let's, let's keep the notion of day scenes are forward in time. So Fred being at night, that could be the first night, cause okay, the night scenes go backwards. So we see Fred put in the cell the first time and then the sec- I don't know, I'm, my brain hurts. Okay, the, the day scenes happen in order, cause Fred's in the prison yard, he gets a headache and then we cut to this with him getting the medicine. And then, then it could be the first night of, um, but that's not, that's not backwards, I don't know.
I don't know.
David, if you just told us what your movie was, were about, we wouldn't have this problem. But then also if you did, then we wouldn't be talking about this probably, so. Okay, yeah, so it fades out like after every scene, so like, I think that means it's going in the same order. So if this part in the middle, in the jail cell, is melding the two plotlines together, because this, the next, the second movie of the three movies is kind of more linear, I would say, but who knows? Aspirin. I'm talking about a little place called Aspen. Ironically, they filmed in Breckenridge, not Aspen, so Aspen in Dumb and Dumber is Breckenridge.
Oh, that's awesome.
Which, which you would know, cause you live in Colorado.
I don't think I knew that. Maybe I did, I don't know.
Wait, are these two guards, are they the cops that follow Pete around?
Let's keep that in mind.
Let's keep that in mind, I'm gonna write that down. Oh, there's the cabin, okay, so what does the cabin mean? I'll write that down too.
It means he's changing.
It's always in reverse, yes, but it's in reverse, which ties into the theory of the time idea.
Yes.
And this is when the movie becomes an entirely different movie. Oh, oh, there he is.
Yeah. Aliens!
Under the sea, oh, okay. It mi- it reminds me of like, Under the Sea in like, the Disneyland attraction.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like.
But yeah, also aliens.
He's going on the highway. He's lost on the highway.
That's the mystery man. Or no, it is Pete.
It's Pete.
So we never find out what happens to Pete in this scene either.
Yeah.
Cause his parents never say. Jesus.
Is that the electric chair, though?
Possibly.
Cause it's, like, it looks the same, wha- what was that?
What was that? Gotta write that down.
Cause it looks the same as it, as the final shot.
What's the final shot?
Well, I think it's like when he, well, whenever he's freaking out.
Oh, no, no, s- s- sorry, I was putting, saying, what's the final shot before Pete changes? I was sorry, I was reading out loud again.
What is that?
Yeah, what is that shot too? Is that him changing? Alright, we gotta write this, these are the outliers. This will be really fun to add. I wish we could just like, sit in a room and just like, edit this together in person.
I know.
Cause, cause, cause I'd be like, oh, we should use this, and you're like, oh, let's use this, and I'm like, we can mute this here, and mute that there, and. The prerequisites before listening to this is just so funny. That's the movie in a nutshell. That should be my letterbox review, this is some spooky shit right out here. I'll write that quote down. So if Pete's twenty-four, how old would you say Fred is?
He looks older, but he's probably not supposed to be that old, like. Like, I would guess late thirties.
Cause if he, if Renee is Alice, and this is Fred's way of remembering how he met Alice, then is she supposed to be younger than Renee?
Yeah, she would be then.
I th- I think you're right, I think it is more of like a circular thing, becau- like a ti- circular time loop, because also, why are his parents both, that's, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Kirabusi. So if Pete meeting Alice is how, is Fred's version of how he met Renee, then at the end, when she says, you'll never have me, and leaves, that's like his, his perception of his past reality kinda crumbling, and that's why he turns back into himself.
Mm-hmm, that makes sense. That makes sense.
Should I write that down too?
Sure. So we haven't seen these guys.
No, so they're not, okay, they're not detectives, and they're not this, the, um, the guards.
Right. Are the cars older than the nineties, or are those?
Yeah, they're older, the cars are older, but then if that, if the movie takes place in the nineties, and this is the past, it would be like the eighties, or maybe the seventies. But then there's also a white picket fence, and like, Blue Velvet's like both the fifties and the eighties, so like, if Blue Velvet takes place in the Twin Peaks world, cause it's Jeffrey as a younger Cooper, then that would make sense with this. Cause if this takes place in the eighties, like Blue Velvet does, then tha- then it can have that fifties aesthetic.
True.
There we go, I'm connecting all the dots.
Love it.
Thank you, I'm actually really proud, I'm not gonna lie, I'm actually kind of really proud of this, so. Like, because, because it's probably just bullshit, and it's conjecture for sure, but like, I actually feel like I'm really accomplishing something.
Okay, good.
Whether, whether you feel, feel free to disagree on that, but that's just my opinion.
Okay.
Was that like, uh, yeah, you, yeah, you go, but I'm like, disagreeing, okay, or is that just like a?
Okay, that's an okay.
See, I overanalyze things, I'm, I'm in overanalyzing mode, so.
Yeah, true. Just gotta think about everything, like, what does that mean?
Yeah, what is this, what does the pool scene mean?
Water, like the reflection.
Pool, eh, eh, there was a pool at Andy's party.
There was reflection of the water on top of Fred when he was zapped.
Here he is. That's him with like, the, the second one on the right.
Giovanni.
Yep. I think it's, yeah, is that him second from the right?
I think he's the furthest on the right. Yeah, he's the furthest on the right.
He, he's the one that said, let's go for a drive, I think.
Yeah.
Also, what's this? Them watching the strawberries, what does that mean?
Well, maybe that's showing that it's old, like, black and white.
Maybe it's showing that Fred's parents weren't happy either, they just kinda sat around and just, or maybe they were.
Seems pretty happy to me.
They're just concerned about their son.
Yeah.
That's true. They're, they're, they're happier than a certain other family in David Lynch media.
Whoa. That was weird. Whoa, they all drank their beer at the same, oh, probably cause they cheers. I'm like, what does it mean?
Yeah, you're in a gr- I'm glad you're in overanalyzing mode too.
I was like, okay, this is a false reality, these are robots.
I got beat up, okay? I'm hungry.
Me too.
We'll have to eat when we're done recording this. So would this be, this is a bowling alley, but could this be the pink room? Nah, there's not enough strobes.
Maybe later in the night, it turns into the pink room.
That's true, it could, cause the night's still young. And it's up in Canada, right? Cause it's on the border, so, is it? Or is the pink room in, cause I know One Eye Jax is in Canada.
I don't remember.
So, but that's only if this movie takes place in Washington, it could take place in another state.
This takes place in California.
Of course. See, this is why I have you with me, cause I over, I overlook the super small details, like where it takes place. I love Richard Pryor. I, I love that he's in this movie for like, two scenes.
He's great.
This was his, this was his last movie too.
Man, really?
Mm-hmm, him and Jack Nance.
Gosh.
I've always wanted to see the full thing, but one night in high school, I started this movie called Stir Crazy, with, um, with him and Gene Wilder, and it was really funny, I didn't finish it, cause I went to bed, I haven't, I still haven't seen the rest.
Aww.
But they did like, four movies together, and I kinda wanna watch all of them.
Him and Gene Wilder?
Yeah.
He must be older than he looks.
He must be, unless he didn't act in movies for a while. I don't know when he died. Cause like, I think Jack Nance died like, right around the time this movie, like, right after it came out, or right before it came out.
Man.
Does that mean something, or is that just a car deal, cat car dealing?
Oh, here we go.
Here we go. So is Mr. Eddie a figure in Pete's, or Fred's life? We know he can.
Mm-hmm.
So it wouldn't be a pink room, but it's like a pink room style place, I guess. That's such like a mob movie thing, all the doors open at one time, they all get in and get out at the same time. Like, and it's like a limo type car, like a, or not like a limo, but you know what I mean?
Like a mob car.
Yeah, like a mob car with tinted windows, and, yeah.
What was that?
That was their car.
Oh, okay, I was paying attention to the building.
Yeah, so if this takes place in the same time as Blue Velvet, which we could say is like, the eighties, because Twin Peaks takes place in eighty-nine, that's when Laura's killed. So if it's like, early eighties, but it also has that fifties aesthetic, because time is nonlinear for David Lynch, then this movie takes place in that, this part with Pete takes place in the same time as Blue Velvet, because it's Fred's version of what he remembers.
Mm-hmm.
So, which I might be repeating myself, but I think that's the most succinct way I can put it.
That's okay, yes, that sounds good.
So hopefully that makes sense.
Yes.
Also, Pete being a mechanic, and Fred playing saxophone, does, is that, can you connect that somehow?
Only that they're opposites.
Let's go for, let's go for a joyride, you wanna go for a joyride, neighbor? A joyride, what a great idea! Hey, hey Pete, what kinda beer do you like? Yeah, the, the, this is such a thing that, uh, Frank Booth, Dennis Hopper would do, is like the tailgating thing. Actually had this happen to me recently.
Really?
Nah, I, like, 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 like I didn't pull them over and kick the crap out of them, but I had somebody tailgating me like that, and like, um, honked at me, and like, and, and were like, trying to get me to go.
Oh my gosh.
Faster, even though I was going the limit, and I'm just like, dude, chill, like, if you wanna go, pass me.
Yeah.
Like, I al- I almost rolled down my window and did this, cause I thought of this scene. Like, I almost, you know, did the motion of, it just passed me. And they did pass me, but I didn't do the motion, they didn't, they didn't flip me off either.
Okay, that's good.
I love that, they both just.
They're like, okay, here we go.
Holy shit.
I wanna do that sometime.
Me too. Maybe not this part. That's, that's what I wanna say to people, you know how many car lengths it takes? That, that's what I would say to people. I mean, he's an asshole, but he's not wrong.
That's so funny. I'll get a manual.
I'll get a manual. Freaking idiot.
Oh my god.
Pete's just like, well, that was mildly traumatizing. And, and Mr. Eddie's just like, sorry Pete, I, I got, I get, I get really, I get really pissed when people tailgate. Also, his car's not damaged at all.
Yeah.
Like, that's gotta be one expensive car, yeah. I, I can tell. I'm just vibing with this music.
Yeah, this is such a Twin Peaks song.
It is, well, of course it is, cause it's Angelo.
Angelo.
Do you think we'll just end up and do commentaries on every David Lynch movie?
Probably.
Maybe, maybe for Far Awakes Me, we wouldn't even do an episode, we'd just do a podcast.
A commentary?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So does that tape have Renee, Alice on it? So does that tape have Renee Alice on it? Because he was gonna hand it to him, but I wonder if that was one that Alice had made.
Probably.
Yeah, maybe Firewalk, maybe we'll just do a commentary, but also, I don't know. Wait, did Pete see them? The detectives?
I don't know. Laurent.
Laurent. De Laurent.
Fade. Cool. Awesome.
Maybe the whole. No, it can't be the whole movie is that way, because, oh, Pete's coming out of the dark.
Oh no, who is he now?
What if there's, like, what if it's a shot of Fred going into the dark and then he comes and it's the shot of Pete coming out? And then that's the linear way to look at it. Like, ugh. No, we have to look at it as two, and he's looking, yep, we have to look at it as two separate things and then we bridge them together. And then you put the ending on top of it. That's probably the best way to do it.
It also doesn't help that his scar on his head is gone now, so. We don't know if this happened way before or if this is happening after. He doesn't know, he doesn't know who she actually is. He just thinks she's hot, so whatever.
That, that track when Mr. Eddie's driving, I think it's called Mr. Eddie's Theme on the soundtrack. It, um, it kinda sounds like Audrey's Dance a little bit.
Oh, okay.
Which is, you know, from Twin Peaks, obviously. That's so creepy though. Why, like, I know they, I know they're detectives and they need to watch him, but like. Why do they watch him all the time? Like at least drive away and give him some privacy or something.
Are they still in the car?
I guess, yeah.
It's like. Spacious.
Spacious, is that what you said? Jack Nance.
And the sax solo.
And the sax solo. So that means that he wanted a whole different reality as Pete. But then his life is starting to creep in with the sax solo and with Alice. Except, he wanted Alice there, because it's his dream version of himself and Renee. So like. I don't know. Anyway, this is my favorite scene. Pete meets Pete. I wish we could just sit in the same room and edit this together, but we'll, we'll make do.
I like that.
So this, then this is Pete. So, so Pete is the same, Jack Nance is always Pete in every movie. Because in Blue Velvet, he's one of Frank's goons, and then he becomes a good person, and then this is him in a car mechanic reforming himself. And then he moves to Washington. And he moves to Washington.
There we go.
So there we go. So that, that connects that.
It's making more and more sense.
It is. Just like from this scene to the, even the first scene they meet to the next scene. Is there's so much more tension in this next time these two meet, because of, you know, Pete being, spending time with Alice.
And you know that Mr. Eddie's crazy now, so.
Here we go.
The song is called This Magic Moment.
It's a, it's a, it's a cover of a sixties song.
That's great.
It's so fitting, um, it's like a non-diegetic, like, it just really. Oh, I love that. I love that so much. It's like in Mulholland Drive when they look at each other. It's just, it's so. Electric and kinetic. It's just, it's kinetic. It's just. Yeah, it's just like. It's like, when you, you can't have a character say, you know, this moment took me by surprise, but if the song says it, it's like it, it connects the dots in your subconscious mind. It's like, it's so genius. Definitely one of my favorite needle drops in a movie.
Needle drops.
That's what it's called. Thanks, Toon. Also, I love that like flickering, um, effect that's like put on the slow-mo.
Oh, yeah.
That moment is so. I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna make the pun, but it really is. Also, that sunset is just gorgeous. And that one too, like that, like the sky is just. So you go from a scene with Patricia Arquette getting out of the car to views of beautiful red and purple sunsets. Like, that's, that's such, like. Name a better juxtaposition in movies, I'll wait. Like Two Thousand One, with like the bone and then the space, the space like satellite? Nah, man, like this. What, uh, what color would you say that dresses?
Off-white.
Off-white, okay. Yeah, okay, so I know the literature of Twin Peaks might throw a wrench into. Um, into the, what I, my theory with Pete, but you know, just with Pete Martel, Jack Nance. But you know, it, it is what it is. It's, it's all fun and games.
It is, yeah. No, I think it makes sense still.
I love her eyes. It was a magic moment. Sorry. But in this version of events, she's already tied into Mr. Eddie and Andy and all of them. So was Renee when Fred met her and then they got married and, and then she said she got out of it, but then she didn't? But then he would know Andy, because he kills Andy. So is that part of just his fantasy? Is it like? It's gotta be, it has to be a mixture.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably his fantasy for sure.
But like, this might be accurate, that she was with somebody and then came to see him, and then he made the move to. Turn the phone off and says like, we don't need a tab. We don't need a taxi, taxi. She's very forward. She's like, take me to dinner. No, I'll take you to dinner. No, we'll just skip dinner. We'll, 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 we'll just go right to this. So, if she, she must have an apartment and that must be where they're at right now. Because they wouldn't be at his house.
Right. I don't remember. Do we see her apartment? I guess, right here?
I don't think so. Unless, yeah, it's this.
Hard to tell where they are.
Oh, they're in a hotel. Oh, duh, they're.
Yeah, okay.
Do we see her eyes before, like? When she's, do we see? You know, this before, um. But now I wonder how similar Pete's and Fred's, the actors' eyes are.
Well, they looked, I was like, for a second, I was like, is that Fred?
Yeah, is that Fred and Renee?
Her nails are white now, but they were black when. She was Renee.
Whoa, seriously? That's awesome! That's awesome. I love that.
Dangerous game, my friends.
There's the sunset, sunrise this time, before sunrise. Yeah, also, she just calls out to him. I mean, like, I know that he's there, but like, you know. Like, what if Mr. Eddie happened to be there? Like, what if he was in the backseat? And then, and then he just, they just poked his head out like, hey Alice, I'm here too. And, and like Pete had a gun to his head or something.
Oh, god.
But that doesn't happen. Instead, this happens. Yeah, because like, Alice desiring Pete as much as she does is obviously, you know. Fred wanting Renee to desire him, but, um, but I wonder how much of it's factual and how much of it is like his idolized version of the past. Romanticized. That was a quick take. Like, he, he almost didn't get it. Also, why does she answer the phone like that?
I don't know.
Also, um, yeah, so the shot of her mouth is like when Renee's on the phone, when she calls the, the detectives. Is that, okay, really weird question. Is, is her lipstick supposed to be like? Like, that kinda heart shape on the top, or is that just like normal?
Um, that's normal. I mean, if her lips are that shape. Which it looks like they are. Yeah, that's called a Cupid's bow.
So this is like him sitting in the cell as Fred.
Well, it was lightninging outside when the phone rang.
And also her face is turning blue. It's like blue flashes of lightning.
Right, so he's like. Traveling back. Oh, the spider. Spider wrangler. Named in the credits.
Yeah, so like, is this when, is this when he changes or, no, because then he changes in the. So what if the jail cell scene happens after this? But no, because it doesn't make sense, because he goes and sees Sheila and then he meets Alice. And he comes back to the garage.
I don't know, maybe he's just getting reminded of it, of the whole situation. Right now, and he's sort of freaking out.
Then he goes out and sees Sheila to clear that away from his mind, I think. Think that's what he does?
Oh, wait, what?
Wait, what, what, what?
His parents were sitting there, and then when he moved, they were gone, I think.
Oh, wait. So does that mean that the?
Maybe they were on the couch and we just didn't see the couch after he walked away.
Is his reality starting, I'm gonna write that down, because I wanna go back and look at that. Maybe it means his reality is starting to slip. Interesting song choice. His parents are back.
This is such a weird scene.
It is.
Look at how dark it is.
It's like Fred and Renee's apartment, or house. But then. But then they don't elaborate.
Yeah, what? Oh, man.
Yeah, why won't they tell him? Like, what happened?
Maybe it's so bad.
Maybe that's how he got hurt. Because like, it, it could be because Fred, um, oh, wait. Yeah, yeah, because Fred got hit in the police station and that's how we thought Pete would get hurt. Maybe it was because of this night.
Yeah, what is that? What is that?
Yep.
But what was the first thing? Like his eye opening? Like a really swollen eye?
I don't know. That was, that was the same thing we saw before, right before he transformed. Oh, oh, uh, Pete's name tag says Phil, but maybe that, maybe that's not his real name. Maybe it's a pseudonym.
You know how, yeah, people always wear those boiler suits with mechanics with not their name on them?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Ah, that scene is so tense. Ah, the scene is so tense. Alice. How did he meet, oh, whatever. Oh, no, she tells us.
Make it out.
That's, that, that, that's the extent of what he says cuz he can't, he can't say anymore because that'd be too horrifying for him.
Mm-hmm, true.
Well, it makes sense because one, we know Mister Eddie would do that because he's crazy. We saw him with the tailgater, but two, because in Fred's mind, if Renee was with somebody else, it would be because of reasons like this. You know, like, like she's tied up with this gangster. So that's why she, of course, it's not her choice.
Yeah, she's being made to do it.
Yeah, I mean, she's trying to get out of it. And also, what's up with that?
Hmm.
What are her nails now? Like a?
Like electric blue, like the light. Were we talking about how she was like Marilyn Monroe-ish?
I think you mentioned that, yeah.
Did I? I don't remember. She kinda is.
I love that. I love little moments like that when like characters just look at each other and it, there's just so much like emotion and when you, like, no words are needed, you know?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, I forgot about this part.
Which is Andy, that she's talking about.
I forgot, like, when you said he kills Andy, I'm like, I don't remember how he dies.
Yeah, he, he, he gets his head bashed in.
Yeah.
See, Pete can just ask her directly.
Mm-hmm.
Fred can't.
Mm-hmm.
Wait, she said honey and he's like, no, Pete. Like, what, what's the point of that? Is, 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 is that cuz that's what she would say when they were married? So like, like she wants him, he wants her to call him Pete? Did you notice that?
Yeah, I don't know. I think maybe like he's like being serious. He's like, no, just call me Pete. Like, don't try to sweet talk me. I don't know.
Okay. It's a way to look at it too. One thing I would love if I directed movies is to make, is to like put the soundtrack together or at least like have a hand in that because that would be, that'd just be really fun to do.
Yeah, you'd be good at that.
Thank you. I feel like I'm actually really good at making playlists, not to sound egotistical, but.
No, you are. You put a lot of thought into them.
And like with song flow, I try to make each song flow into the next one.
Mm-hmm.
But also cuz I spent most of my adolescent life listening to Pink Floyd, so that was probably where I got that from.
Oh, wow, look how red that room is.
Oh, my God, it's so red. It's like when Laura's at One Night Jacks. It's like that kind of, um. Which if they, which if they have more than one place, that could be this place too.
Yeah.
I do like the song, but like when I listen to it, I try not to think of the scene. I try to just think of like cuz it's like disturbing.
Yeah.
It's just so messed up. How they like, you know? Obviously.
Yeah. But then she's like, alright, alright, I can do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is kind of empowering. Ooh, red nails. Oh, blue nails.
I love that. I love that, I love that it stops when she touches his face.
Mm-hmm.
Like the fact that she didn't break from that and she just like, you know? Handled it in the way that she had to kinda thing. Is that what you mean as empowering?
Yeah.
I don't know if I could remember all of that.
Yeah, nope, I can't.
I mean, they probably went over it like a few times, but like, you don't wanna do that on movies because that takes time.
But no, like whenever there was like an action scene in a movie where there's like, okay, remember this, go right, go left, go right, and then go down the street and into the third door on the left. And I'm like, nope, could not do that.
Yeah, yeah, me too, me too. I love that, like moment though, when she says like, if you want me to go away, then I will. Like, I don't know if that's like for, cuz, cuz you know, that, that, that's Fred being like, you know, like he still wants to be with her even though she's you know, not being faithful, but just like even in this timeline, just like I just, I just love like vulnerable moments in romances, so.
Sheila, uh, Sheila, stop, uh.
That's what I was gonna say. Uh, just, just stop.
Stop it.
Stop it. Yeah, like I wanna know what happened.
Could this be the night that he goes, like he changes cuz his parents and sh- her and she are out of the, out on the lawn?
Right, but then if he changes, then, then how does he see Sheila again? Like, like, cuz he doesn't really go up and apologize. She just runs away and then like it's kind of it.
Oh.
Cuz they see each other again. If that were the case, they'd see each other after this, you know?
He, yeah.
Oh, yeah, cuz they said the night of, he came home with Sheila and a man.
Yeah.
So if the mystery man is from the lodge, then this is him like, like he found, he tracked down Fred slash Pete to this reality and now he's like reminding him of his true self, which Fred wants to escape from.
Ah, okay, okay, okay.
It's like Judy, how Judy is like, um, um, you know, what Judy, what happens to Laura? And then how Judy like switches things up.
Mm-hmm.
Me trying to be vague for anyone who hasn't seen The Return. But you, I hope you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But is Mister Eddie being possessed right now? Look at his eyes, so evil.
Or maybe he just knows for sure about Pete and Alice.
Yeah.
Cuz he passes the phone, so. I know we've been talking about Fred and Renee, but for that second, for a second, I was like, oh, yeah, that is the beginning of the movie.
What?
About Fred and Renee. Like, I forgot for a split second and I'm like, oh, yeah.
Oh. He is so creepy.
That's so creepy. That's so creepy.
So he's in the place he can't escape?
Yes, cuz his parents are gone again.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, cuz is the place he can't escape like his own mind and like the truth? Of what happened or? I don't know.
Or is it something out of this, out of his control and out of this world?
Like the lodge?
Yeah.
Or the red room or something?
Yeah. Oh, look at that reflection again on the pool.
Whoa, so that is, that's the same, cuz that's Andy's. So it would be the same reflection.
Yeah. Interesting.
Cuz Andy's house is the same as it is.
And Andy is the only character who's the same person in both stories.
Except for the mystery man.
Yeah.
It's funny cuz the last time we were here, it, it was a full, it was a jam-packed full of people and now there's no one there.
Mm-hmm.
Like, how eerie is that?
Mm-hmm. That kitchen is very nineties, though.
It is. But the house is the same, isn't it?
I think so.
Yeah, what's up with that?
I don't know.
That German.
Fucking creepy.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's really creepy.
Whoa, her socks were like in the shape of music notes.
What? That's crazy, what?
I don't know, I might be tripping now, but I don't know.
I think you need to trip out to understand this movie. But yeah, it's like Fred's insecurities, like no matter what he does, he can't really escape them because they're literally being replayed over and over right in front of him.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, I love that cuz in the background is Alice and then like in front of him, he, he, he had like that moment of rage where it's like that's what he's thinking, you know?
Yeah.
But we see it behind him like blurred out cuz it's like in his mind.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Pete's just like, what the hell? But wait, he stood back up. So like, did they not hear him stand up?
I guess not.
But wait, did Pete didn't really kill him. That was self-defense, wasn't it? Even though he hit him first, like.
Yeah.
Cuz he ran at him and he just like pushed him. It's like, um, weird reference, but it reminds me of, um, like in the, like in the ending of The Lion King, like how he pushes him with the you know, like, 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 like how he's charging at him and he just like pushes up on his stomach and like pushes him ah, forward and then he.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I was like, how does Lion King end?
It ends with, um.
Spoilers for Lion King.
Yeah, yeah, it, it ends with a Return of the King style fight. If you haven't seen The Lion King, what the fuck are you doing listening to our commentary? Go watch The Lion King, like. We're just two people on the internet who like talking about movies, like. Bobby, you killed Mike. This isn't fucking Mike. Is it? Is it Mike? She's so cold about it too. She's like, you killed him.
Yeah.
Cuz when, cuz when Laura says that, she's like high out of her mind and she's just laughing like crazy.
God, yeah. So disturbing.
Firewalking me so good. It's so, it's so messed up. He just like, yeah, he, he just can't escape it, like, like he could turn the projector off, but he can't. Cuz he knows it's her. How uncomfortable would that be to film scenes like that, though, like? Okay, yeah, so we have Alice and Renee in this photo.
Yeah.
And then we have just Renee in the other one.
Right. Doesn't make sense.
Yes, it does.
It does make sense.
I mean, it does, but I mean. He's got his headache again.
Uh-huh. Why is there not a bathroom on the main level?
Yeah, I don't get that, like especially if you're gonna throw like wild parties, why wouldn't you have a bathroom?
You had to, and that house, that big house, there's gotta be more than.
There has to be a bathroom downstairs. There has to be.
Has to be. No excuse.
No, there's no reason. At least have a half bath by the door, like.
Yeah.
Uh-oh, lightning flashes.
Oh.
Wait, that was red at the end of the hall. Did you see that?
Yeah.
It was like, was it the, I don't think it was red curtains, but it was like some kinda red thing. Yeah. It's a red door.
Five.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Oh, yeah, cuz when he opens this door. Twenty five. Oh, yeah, cuz when he opens this door, it's all red inside, right?
Yep, but no, that's room twenty, twenty six. What the hell? So that, so then. She's like, did you wanna ask me why? So that must be.
Like her.
Renee to Fred.
Alter ego that's mean and horrible.
Uh-huh.
That he's maybe imagining.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that, that, that's like him being like, what if she responds that way?
Yeah.
I think. You know? Cuz I think on some level, he probably feels guilty for, first of all, even thinking that and second of all, for, for being like, was it my fault that she's not? You know, being faithful. Also, this, what is up with this?
I don't know. I think it's just a, a fake out.
But she points it at him. She's not like, just looking at it, she's like.
Maybe she's trying to test him, see how he would react.
Yeah, I don't get it, like. Why? What would that do? Oh, yeah, cuz then Fred pulls it out and kills Mr. Eddie with it. What does that mean? What, what's she mean by offense? Like, what does that mean? Like, I don't mean it's a guy, but like.
I don't know, I've never heard that term. But I guess it means, yeah, the.
I'll write it down. Oh, my god, I have, I have like copious notes from this. What is she wearing, like a leopard print? Pete, you drive, he's like, okay. Fine, I'll drive, gosh. Alice never drives. She always takes a taxi or we never see her driving on her own, of her own accord.
She's not in control.
Also, this is a rhyming scene of when Fred and Renee are driving, you know?
Hell, yeah.
He's like s- so freaking out. I mean, I would be too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have the same shot of the cabin in reverse, except this time we get the full shot. So. Maybe this really did happen with Fred and Renee then, but then did the cabin blow up? Cuz we don't see it in forward motion.
Why it blows up?
It's like, it's like maybe, maybe Fred and Renee like, I don't know.
I don't know.
Maybe what, maybe, maybe Fred and Renee were there and then they took the money and burned the place down and then, or Fred. Or when Fred killed Mr. Eddie, he and the mystery man burned the place down and then he blocked it out. And then that's, it's like partly repressed and, but it was when he was Pete, you know? I don't know.
No.
Okay, so in a few minutes, Fred's gonna go kill Mr. Eddie with the mystery man, right? Cuz he takes the gun out of his pants that Alice put in there. And then he's going to, um, kill Mr. Eddie.
Okay.
And then maybe, cuz in his mind, he's Fred, maybe he did that when he was younger as Pete and then, and then it was like. I don't know, it wouldn't be Mr. Eddie's cabin, but let's say they like set fire to the cabin afterward.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I don't know, I might, might, I'm, I feel, I feel broken now, not emotionally broken, but like.
Mind broken.
Mentally broke, yeah, mentally broken.
Yes. Oh, shit.
Cuz he left the gun, but then he has it again.
What?
What's the point of him?
Okay, I don't remember this.
You don't remember this? They come to the cabin and there's no one there.
Oh, yeah.
And then she leaves. What do you wanna do while we wait? Listen to the radio? This song is in other movies. Like, it's also in Justice League.
It's in Justice League?
Yep, yes, there's a scene when time slows down and Flash saves, uh, saves somebody and then that's like, like they play this song, I think. That also feels really like a thematic question. And then he says, I want you over and over and she says, you'll never have me, so.
Yeah.
So is that, is that like her saying, like, even though I've done this, you still wanna be with me? And then he says yes. But then that's like him with Renee also, like it's, it, this is like when they, when it merges, right? So like, so like ma- maybe in his mind, like he's like, okay, my wife did admit to these things, but I still wanna, we still wanna be with each other. Which is what he would want cuz he still loves her.
Yeah.
Does that make, does that make sense?
Or it could be. Still like his imagination or his, his deep subconscious saying, you'll never have me. And he feels like he never can because of her past or something. And.
Even though she asks him like right then and says like, you know, um. We could still make this work, but then, but then his mind is like, nope, you can't.
Yeah, he's still like too caught up in it, everything.
Yeah, he can't like let it go.
That would be very uncomfortable.
What?
On the dirt.
Oh, yeah, god.
There's probably like burrs and stuff.
At least put like a blanket under you or your clothes under you or something.
Go in the cabin or like go in the car.
Or in the car, yeah. But it's not as, it's not as pretty of a shot cuz there's not the headlights.
Yeah, they need the headlights cuz it's bright light, it's re- revelation, it's. It's the change in the movie. Okay, maybe it's not revelation. Well, it might be.
You mean revelation like the Bible or revelation like the term revelation?
Like he has a revelation that he still wants to be with her, even, even though. She's has this past.
Well, he says, she says, you'll never have me, maybe that's, that's cuz he's, that's him in a way acknowledging that he killed her, even though he doesn't ignore. Like, he doesn't, he doesn't. Like, he can't fully wrap it, it, it's his mind's way of wrapping around it. It's her leaving him because he's like, I would never kill her.
Yes, 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 that makes sense.
Uh-oh, lightning and thunder. So is her saying this like her evil side then, like that he saw earlier?
Cuz she flips over, yeah.
Her nails are like that green again. Like that electric blue. So then her leaving must be what wakes him up to be Fred again. Because, cuz it's starting to crumble.
And then she goes into the cabin.
And then we never see her again.
Right.
Well, uh, we see her as Renee, but not as Alice. Yeah, so like, this is his version of how he met Renee, who is Alice, but then, um, when Alice says you'll never have me and leaves, that's like. Fred, his, his idolized version of the past like crumbling cuz reality is seeping in and he can't escape it.
Yeah.
And Pete's not in the rest of the movie either, so.
The light is dimming.
The light is dimming and there's lightning.
Lightning. God, that is so creepy.
Here I am.
Oh, I hate it, I hate it.
I'd, I'd give you a hug, but I can't cuz I'm not there.
Virtual hug.
Virtual hug. He's wearing Pete's clothes, though. Oh, that's so creepy, that's so creepy. Where's Alice? How's Annie? So creepy. The gun is still in the car. That's an above angle. Wait, so there's a cut here, check this out, check this out. So that's, that's like a really odd cut, you know?
Oh, yeah.
So that's, that's like the reality verse, I think, like, like when he's through the camera, that's real, that, that's reality and then like him, um. Him in color is like.
Is it the way he remembers?
Yeah, I, I think so.
Yeah, that makes sense. That ties it together.
Yeah. But we don't, we don't have everything else tied together yet.
I think we do, I think we do. I think we, I think we understand this movie. Maybe.
Lost Highway Hotel.
Thunder!
But wait, so then what's this? Is, did he drive here or is this like also hit in the past? Cuz now that's Andy's house.
Right.
And now she's Renee again, so.
But also Andy's house, that couldn't have been Andy's house because it's definitely the hotel.
Right, so it's like his mind was like connecting the two.
Yeah.
Except then it was Alice and now it's Renee cuz he's, he's like.
Yeah.
Back to himself in a way.
Yeah.
I mean, in a lot of ways. Not fully, but. My brain hurts so much, but in a good way. So, okay, so what, how about this? He went to the hotel to ki- to kill Mr. Eddie cuz he knew Mr. Eddie, Dick Laurent, Mr. Eddie and his wife were, you know. H- him, him, him and his wife, him and Renee were, you know. Sneaking on the side and then, cuz oh, that's the dress she wore as Alice. No? It's not?
It's, that was like silver and it had like a V-neck and the other one was like a scoop neck and like off-white. That was the dress she wore to the party?
Oh, maybe it was.
I think cuz she had that little shawl.
Okay, so then this, so this is the night of the party, she, Renee is with Mr. Eddie and then she leaves, Fred goes to kill Mr. Eddie. But Mr. Eddie's not there, so he and the mystery man chase him down and kill him and then he, then he, then that's how he knows Dick Laurent is dead. So that means that the first scene still happens at the end, but Fred, Fred knows that Dick Laurent is dead because he killed Dick Laurent. So, so at Andy's party, when he says, I thought he was, I thought Laurent was dead, that's what he's saying cuz he killed him.
Right.
And then Andy wouldn't know that. And then, then that's how the mystery man says we've met before because he helped him kill. Mr. Eddie. Now we've got it.
But they didn't meet at his house.
No. Unl- unless we go back and watch the first third, then in there somewhere in the backwards memento-esque chronologically that, that, that we were theorizing about. Then, then they do, but.
Perhaps.
I don't know. Cuz when he has that dream and he sees Renee's face, isn't that the mystery man's face? So like.
Yeah.
So like, maybe that's what he means is during then.
Yeah.
Imagine if Mr. Eddie called him Pete here, like how, how much that would be like. Cuz he, he's like, Pete, what are you doing? Yeah, I don't know what's up with that German, it's creepy, though. Oh, this part's so creepy. This is so creepy. It kinda looks like Aro a little bit in that shot.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
It's, it's, it's like put Aro's cackle over that and then, then that, then that won't become your sleep paralysis demon.
Oh, god. No.
If that, if that happens, I will find a way to transfer into your, from my dream into, I'll, I'll be like Fred, I'll just come in with like. Just be like, you're coming with me.
Okay.
And just. Except, yeah. I tried to make that wholesome, but there's probably no way to do that because with this movie. So this is right before the party. That he kills him because when he goes to the party, he knows he's dead. Fred knows that Mr. Eddie's dead.
Okay, okay.
Man, I, I just wanna make like a, like, not, not, not even for like purposes of watching it, but just like for my own two cents, just make like a chronological. What I think edit of this movie and then just be like, here, here's how I think it happens. So, so if we can, if we can get, if, if I get like a capture card or something, I'll just cop. And, and I know that's parroting, but it's a fan of it, so.
Maybe I can do it somehow with this Amazon.
Maddie, if you can, that would be amazing. I would love that. I would actually take the time to sit down and like. Actually edit it.
Yeah.
So Fred knew about this and then.
Is that the girl from the party?
I was just gonna say, is that the girl from the party?
I think so.
So. Yeah, so Fred knew about this, them watching this together somehow and then like. Yeah, what's with the eye shot, like?
That's just how he looks, I think.
But I mean, like, why are the eye, like? What? So is that like, they really killed somebody on film or is it like?
Maybe.
It's so disturbing.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are the two gunshots. Yeah, I'd like listen to our, what I would do is I'd listen to our commentary and then like, I'll either do it like a word doc or I'll either like re-edit the movie and I'll just like. Follow what we said and like put scene one here, scene two here, it's like, it'll, I'll Frankenstein the movie.
Yes.
And then. And then you can watch it and be like, oh, that's what I think, and then we can make our own like chronological edit. You and me can really out ugly them, can't we? But how did he get the gun unless he's, you know, Fred? Cuz if he's possessing Fred like how, like, like, like the situation with Bob, then that makes sense, you know? Cuz he leaves and it's just Fred there. It's like the end of Lost in Translation, what is he whispering?
It's like the mystery man is an extension of his psyche at this point.
Right, cuz he's the one, cuz he's not there anymore.
Yeah, and he's the one who killed him, but he wanted to kill him, but he couldn't and now he has the gun.
So it's like Fred compartmentalizing that part of himself cuz he didn't, cuz he didn't wanna think of himself as a murderer.
Yeah.
So it is circular. Okay, then this is obviously, so all four detectives are in this scene. And then it's just, yeah, just Renee.
Just Renee.
So this, this is prob- this is at the end, this is like close to the end, like after this is when Fred hears. The doorbell ring and when he rings his own doorbell and then that's like the circular loop. And then him dying either ends the loop or, or is the conduit for. You know, the loop to continue, I don't know. I think we, I think we finally got it, so now, so now it's just making an edit or writing all this down and then watching it and seeing like. I think we, I think we finally got it. So now it's just making an edit or writing all this down and then watching it and seeing like, oh, okay. There's a, there's a, on the DVD of Memento, like they ha- they have a, they have a secret button where you can watch the chronological version of that movie. So that's like what I'm thinking, that's what I'm thinking like we could do and then like, but like just for ourselves, you know?
So it's weird, though, the detectives. From Pete's era don't age, like they're the same.
Age. Right, that's, that's, that's a, that's a flaw, but. Unless it's the same time period and it's just like, he just wants himself to just be younger because he just thinks he's old. You know, you know, like you think he's past his prime, so. Is he still wearing the same clothes as he was before? If nothing else, I'm glad we recorded this just so we, just so we have like this weird edit in our heads now to, to make. So which detectives are those? Are those Pete's or Fred's?
Those are Fred's.
So he leaves the message for himself. So, so that, so that allows the loop to continue, but then this is like the, the end of, so it's like a loop. And then this is like the little tail on the end of the loop, but then it's, it also circles back to the loop. Or he dies and then it's just the tail end of the loop and then it just ends. But also we go back to one with shot wise because.
Maybe he's experiencing this loop over and over and this is the one time that he gets out of it. And it's happens to be the one that we see and it's the end.
Cause wait, you couldn't drive from the early more, from like then and like, yeah. Like how, how, like how much gas would you need to drive that? I don't know, I'm, I'm overthinking it. Did you, so I didn't see Pete's face when he changed, but like his face was all distorted, so like. Does that tie into Elephant Man? I don't know, probably not.
I think, yeah, just. Goes back to when he changed the first time and that same thing happened.
I have the Patricia credited twice, Patricia Cat as Alice and Renee, it's not like the same. Yeah, so I think one, every David Lynch movie is connected and this is like my new theory on that. And secondly, um, secondly, having, having this little loop idea that we've created, we could really make a theory out of it. And it would be, I think it'd actually be really solid.
I think so, too.
As a possible theory, not as a definitive, because it's David Lynch, there's no definitive, you know, there's no definitive theory. But this can be the way we look at it.
Wow, I feel better.
I do too. I feel tired, but I feel better.
Yes, I need a cleanse.
I need to cleanse too. I, I'm gonna go eat something.
Yeah, me too.
If you made it this far, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Means the world to us, listening to us to talk about Lynch movies and our theories and just how much we enjoy this movie.
It's our favorite.
Is there anything else you wanna say before we sign off?
Nope. Thank you. Thanks, uh, for this journey. It's been incredible.
Of course. Oh, well, you're welcome. Um, I'm not being facetious. I was like, wait, are you thanking me?
Um, I feel like I'm on a higher level of existence now, so.
Me too. The lyric is, big deal salami, the real deranged salami. Like, what does that mean?
What does that mean? Oh, but, let's see, you can see the bug, the bug wrangler.
Oh, yeah, let's see if we can find that.
It might have already passed.
Honey wagon driver, cook driver. Spider wrangler. Yeah, sorry, David, I don't, this song is not really that great, sorry. Bug wrangler, there it is.
Bug wrangler.
Steve Kutschner, Kucher, caterer, Michelson Food Services.
Bugs are my business.
Completion bond, film finances. Color and dailies by CFI. Do you have a favorite song in this movie? Do you have a favorite scene in the movie?
Favorite scene? Maybe the one where he's talking with his parents cuz it's just so ominous.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Creepy.
Yeah, that's a great one. That's a great one. Bill Young's Precision Drivers.
Yeah, I like the scene where we go into his, his dream sequence too.
Yeah, that's great, too. Thanks for listening. This was a lot of fun.
Thank you. Maybe we'll do this again.
Yeah. Whatever movie, we don't know yet, but we'll, we'll let you know.
Goodbye, everybody.
Adios. Stay cool.